Iowa. So I attended certain meetings, I'm not going to get into all of them. We covered everything from tools to broadband, solar, electrical. Artificial intelligence is probably one of the hottest items in the whole organization. Plus, there's a lot of talk about solar in all the states around. And the big push in a lot of the states, Mr. Honeyman has a lot of nice statements in his letter. And one of them is trying to get the state legislators in all the states say, you can't use certain grade or, I don't know what you want to call it, grade of farm or the productivity, I'll call it the CSR of the farm if it's so high. They prefer that it's not taken out of production for certain things. So if that gets passed in the next two years, because we had a big discussion on how long it takes the government to implement a program. And right now, folks, it's two years and eight months is the average time. So you're looking at 2026, 27 before things can get done. The artificial intelligence in the farming industry and how they were talking about controlling it is rather, I'd say rather slim. If they get this done, I don't think, I hope it doesn't ever come to this because they want to control the production of the crops all over the United States. When they get to a certain amount of bushels, they'll shut the elevator off. That's what kind of control they're talking about. You got five, four, five, maybe some people might have five thousand acres of corn pit. You can't get rid of them. There's no place to go, there's no elevators will be able to accept grain. And I says, gee, I didn't know they could handcuff the world like that when we have a shortage of food.
Yeah.
And that's what they want to do, they want to control the world by food. Easiest thing there is, you don't have food for production, you don't eat their livestock, either one. Broadband is a very big push from the federal government wanting to get everybody covered in all the states. They're bringing in another forty-eight billion dollars to try and get that done. And that's what all it will be used for is to cover those little pockets in the, like what we got through Mills County, we got certain little areas that haven't gotten their cookups yet.
Is this internet or is this the emergency county?
This is cable.
Cable, okay, internet.
Yeah, internet, fiber, fiber. So far, we're trying to get some push on that. But this, like I say, artificial intelligence, the guy who was explaining it to us, I says, he says, well, we have to take a satellite image of the field, then we have to put it into our program, and then we can go spray. And I says, gee, John Deere is a few steps ahead of you. And he says, who said that? I raised my hand, he says, how do you know about this? I says, I've seen it work. How they can spray weeds in a field you can't see. Twenty miles an hour, hundred foot booms, have little eyes they've developed on the nozzles set up here, and they read all the time. They see weed, it's sprayed. They don't spray the whole field and let it go across.
It's like what?
Yeah, it is, I mean, and how they raise strawberries and things in Florida, it's quarter mile roads, all heat up, everything's canvas, and they poke holes in the canvas. Yes, the first thing comes up is weeds, strawberries, you know, they plant the weeds. And they was, I didn't know you can spray strawberries, but you know, they do lots of things. Hey, I could sit here and talk for hours on this, but I'll move on to my last meeting I had last week when I got back was Board of Adjustment. One thing we had on the agenda is what they call glamping camping. There's a couple in the Les Hills out here, north of Pony Creek, that have an area that they want to set up five tents. And there's a lot of stipulations put in. First of all, they have to build a hard surface road that will handle fire trucks, ambulances and things, have to be able to get in and out. Can't be, the way their tents and things will be set up, there will be no more than eighteen people at a time at this. My biggest concern is there's no running water. They don't want to put down a well, and they don't want to have electricity at this time.
So I hope they're not planning on fire pits, right?
Oh, yeah, they're going to use gas operated fire pits.
No spark flies in the hills?
There's no sparks.
No sparks, okay.
And they're supposed to, they're supposed to have a gentleman that's going to stay on site in a mini house with no electricity and no water.
Where is it?
Out here in the northern part of Pony Creek.
Eastman?
Eastman Road.
And they're not even going to live there?
You know, Larry Cooper bought the site that the Wales Presbyterian Church was on. And then one of his friends begged him to sell it to him. And he did reluctantly, and now there are twelve campers there, and they're all drug addicts. And there's no water, there is electricity, and there's no restrooms. And they've been there for a year. It's not glamping. Just saying, Richard.
Yeah. You know, no fireworks, no smoking, no alcohol. Did I miss anything, Matt?
No injuries?
Yeah, there could be walking trails only, no horse riding.
There's not enough of that furnished by the state of Nebraska and the state of Iowa?
Not when you can pocket your own money out of that.
Joe Vinton's got a glamping thing down there.
Not too many walking trails.
No, but, yeah, but with Carol's, the way hers are set up down in that area there, the people live there, they control it. You know, they have water, they have things that, you know, and the fire trucks can get to the house and stuff. So I had some issues with the fire departments. I can tell you right now, on an average, it would take many, almost forty-five minutes to get out there because they have to go turn around. Do you need any more chairs for, is there any more back there, Matt?
Yeah, there's one here.
Right. But that's kind of where I'm at. I don't really want to get off the ground because Corey likes it, it takes a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to get the building, engineer the room.
You got to do the steps.
I'm very wary of fire and stuff. I mean, and you don't have any water that maybe you could suppress it with on site. That's all I have.
Interesting.
I'd like to, with the echo, Mr. Crouch covered the bulk of that, but it was an interesting conference. The AI thing is what caught my attention the most, seeing the AI, how it worked and spraying, that was interesting. I had a juvenile detention meeting, our rep is leaking up at the juvenile detention building, which houses our juveniles in the Southwest nine counties, so we're going to put a new rep on it. We've saved, we budgeted, and we're ready for it, so it works.
Well, while you two were basking in the sun, I was basking with under a knife, so got my knee fixed and had a couple Zoom meetings with NARC, which is the National Area Region of Council that I am now president of. Very interesting. A lot of, like Richard said, a lot of great things are coming down the pipe, so it's good that we're on top of it, we kind of know what we need to be aware of. Other than that, this week is going to be the big meeting week, so. Okay?
Hello, Rick.
Hey, Mr. Carroll? State county engineer, folks.
First up, approval to purchase Tommy Gate for the new pickups that was approved right two weeks ago. So we don't have them in yet, they're just on order, but wanted to get approval now, that way when the pickups can just go straight to Des Moines and get them installed before they come down.
All right, so who are you?
Total of five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars from Hawkeye Truck Equipment in Des Moines.
Are the trucks in Des Moines? Is that where we go to?
Sioux City.
Sioux City.
I think it must have been approved up.
I second that.
This company is in Des Moines, from Sioux City to...
The trucks will go there.
The trucks will go from Sioux City. Is there a warranty on these lift gates, Tommy Gates? Is there usually? At Linder?
One year is typical, I don't know.
Okay.
It's not listed on this, well. So.
And why did you choose Hawkeye?
Hawkeye, we've been using them the past probably two years. We went to a different company before that, and then at one of the conferences, Mark ran into them, and they were just much cheaper, so we tried to help with one thing after we had what we did first was the service utility box, maybe. And they turned out to be customer service, they're quicker and cheaper, and we liked the products.
Been a motion made and seconded. And we had Tommy Gates put on in one pickup for five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars at Hawkeye Truck Equipment in Des Moines. Any more discussion? Have you done all those in favor?
Right.
Those? Those carried.
Here's a copy of the resolution to accept. What's the resolution pass, Jake, Ben? Can you right away start with now the speed limit signs?
Okay, next item, Resolution twenty-four nineteen. This is on the topic of a speed reduction to forty-five mile an hour on Ingram Avenue from the city limits of Glenwood and southeast to the highway thirty-four. So the resolution stating that under Iowa Code Chapter three twenty-one, two eighty-five, the board supervisors and county engineer are empowered to declare a reasonable and proper speed limit for secondary roads. So what we talked about last time, during the site visit, driving it, a lot of the entrances, I feel that forty-five mile an hour is adequate for that road. We'll utilize the same signs that's posted coming out of the city limits at fifty-five. We'll use the same posts and just slap up the forty-five. And then Kevin talked last night about putting the red flags up. I think that's a good idea, we're going to do that, and more than the people, this doesn't change. I'll also put it out on Facebook, once we get the signs up, or even prior to, warning that, hey, the speed is going to be reduced here.
So is the forty-five going to start immediately you get off of thirty-four?
Yeah.
Immediately?
So the whole length of the road, forty-five.
Okay, okay. If I make a move to make a motion to lower the speed limit to forty-five with the resolution of twenty-four dash nineteen for the Ingram speed reduction.
Motion made and seconded. I will make a comment. My son was active in Ragby, so my wife and I went over Saturday evening, spent some time with his team and things. The only people doing the old fifty-five miles an hour there with a bicycle. I mean, I hate to say it, team bus is coming by, we're not exactly cruising at fifty-five miles an hour. But no, I think it's been, it's been going to be needed because of the daycare we have and the amount of people that have moved into that short strip of Ingram in the curves. I travel two and three times a day, and I'll tell you what, curve make no difference, site makes no difference, they pass you anyway.
Is the daycare right, the first house right in that subdivision?
Right, it's the first house on the left-hand side.
After you.
Second house on the left-hand side, past Jim D. It's got mounds of dirt and stuff around it. And this morning when I went by, there was six vehicles sitting there, I don't know the kids.
It's right next to Ross's, pardon? It's right next to Ross's house.
Right, that's right, South Castle House, yeah. And when they come out of there, either morning or afternoon, when I go by, they never look and they never, they just cross traffic and things, so we might have to have a little assistance from the sheriff.
You didn't know if there was going to be a daycare there? Is there?
It's residential daycare, right?
Pardon?
It's residential.
Right. In homes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they built, they built it for a daycare when they built it. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve Resolution twenty-four nineteen for a speed reduction on Ingram Avenue. Any more discussion? Not roll call?
Crouch?
Yes.
Lee Barry?
Yes.
Yes.
Amy, does this make it a done deal now?
This makes it a done deal.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you very much. For everybody involved.
Thank you. It's so much. And Jay says he can get it out there hopefully today, maybe, or soon.
I'd say with the...
That's fine, no, thank you so much. We really appreciate it, thank you all of us.
Should be a good fundraiser, but come on.
Yes.
Thank you again.
You, I'll copy it before I leave.
Yeah, or just have them, I don't know. Just so you have it on your records too, next one.
Okay, would be up to general discussions, all right?
Before we get into the subdivision stuff, I wanted to talk about our oil roads, Lambert and Noise. We've talked in the past, other bleeding through a lot, we're finally starting to see some stabilization there. But I'd have someone reach out, they have oil on their truck, their vehicles, they have a ton of their vehicles, this is kind of, there's a lot of pictures he sent in, but this is basically the gist of all of them. So a little bit of splatter on the wheel wells, someone back window, typical from that amount of bleeding. He's wanting some sort of compensation, reimbursement, something like that. I reached out to the companies, I at least found something that they used to remove it, so I poured that to them, hey, they use this product. And I said, okay, I got no problem removing it, but it's going to take me hours and hours. You know, if I take it somewhere, it's going to be two hundred and fifty dollars a vehicle, it's a thousand dollars. I said, probably the best we can do is file a claim with our insurance, but I don't feel that our department should be writing checks or anything like that to anyone, it's a slippery slope. It's from an old road, we owned it, I understand, he lives on it, he can't get around it. At the same time, people start coming in because they have the deed on their truck from gravel road, or they just washed their vehicle and it got muddy on the road, so it can be a slippery slope, so I want to be cautious of that. But wanted to bring it up, see if you guys had some sort of guidance, ideas, other than just talking to our insurance, they can investigate and decide.
I agree with you, I mean, whatever we would do, we'd open up a can of worms for all types of complaints, you know, whether it happened on that road or not, who knows?
And, I mean, yes, there were bleeding through very fast, but we did, we spent a lot of effort addressing them, especially when you look at some neighboring counties that had moved through, they didn't put the amount of chips on there, they were just a lot worse. So we did deploy the resources to try and plant it as much as possible, bleeding, we're putting chips on daily. It was just evening up that fact, just like.
Well, there's a hundred and twenty in the shade that last week, that was brutal. Yeah.
The worst vaccine is, we go to the doors on the east side of the river, going out of Malvern, put a rand off, last four hundred feet, there is no, well, there's part of the road lasts, but the rest of it's on the highway, because they're hauling rain down that, they start applying their brakes, start rolling up on the tires. They'd be better off to just go out, tear that part up, and not have anything there but the gravel road. It is so rough, and then it gets on the highway, then it starts picking up on vehicles, so. No, it's...
And I agree with Richard, once we start that can of worms, I got rock chips in my car, so everybody that wants to have their vehicles repaired. I mean, that's unfortunate, I think.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so moving on, picking up conversation from the past two weeks about subdivision and road acceptance, so I'd like to hear your input on this part, Deshawn. So we have a subdivision where I did not ever actually sign off on the roads, accepting them as accounting roads. It was coming into winter time, we're trying to figure it out, hey, who's actually under the jurisdiction, I never accepted it for the ordinance. We decided to go ahead and do winter maintenance as a courtesy to the citizens there, we didn't want just them to be snowed in. And now we're having runoff issues. The home builders aren't controlling their silt, they're getting into the street. People are having, I have a lot of photos I could show you guys, people driving through this much mud to get me there. I don't know how expensive, very nice homes, and the silt's going into the sewer system, so. Swimming pool. Once we accept the road, the drainage system becomes ours too, so the pipes are under the ground, I'm sure they're getting filled up with silt. And so I just want to know who is the jurisdiction under, so that we can resolve it. If it's us, and that's just the way it is, then we just need direction, so we can take action to get this problem solved. We go back to the developer, hey, we never accepted this road, you're not controlling your silt runoff, it's getting in the waterways, they're the ones held responsible, looking for guidance on that.
It's the developers until you've accepted, and then I would, I'm assuming that they had an engineer that was in charge of the entire mountain. I would go back and figure it out, have the developer. I would think you would have the owners until you accept it.
So like Jay said, last winter, because we didn't want people to be snowed in, so that kind of makes him think that we're responsible.
Not unless you just...
Do we send them a bill to make sure he's, that we say?
Where you've already done it, reticent, I can't retroactively listen to it.
Okay, you can always be a good neighbor.
Yeah, we're not looking for reimbursement for that. The part of the subdivision is over, so we have accepted that part. The runoff is coming from the new one that we didn't accept, so the silt's getting into our pipes that are ours currently. But very clearly, there's videos, there's pictures, there's documentation, and it's coming from the part that's not being maintained properly. So then that kind of opens up another can of worms, how do we hold them to responsible to the court case?
Well, hopefully, just alert them and say, since it's fixed, we're getting accepted.
It's been ongoing since I started, so.
Before me?
Yeah, twenty twenty-one.
And meantime, you keep selling lots, and you start getting slick on our roads and before that, so it's...
Typically, we bring it up, they put some measures in to solve the immediate problem, but not the overall problem, so then it just occurs again. I know DNR was involved in twenty-one or twenty-two. And again, they put stuff in, fix it, and then after a while, it just happens again. I'd like to just actually solve it.
Is DNR still staying involved? I heard they were going to get out of, and NRCS was going to get out of the subdivision of food lots and things.
That's my chair.
That's...
Locally, yes, but not state.
Right, so.
So the way DNR got involved and can get involved again is through the Clean Water Act, if their silt's getting into a waterway, which it is, it's getting in the sewer system and draining into the lake, so they can get involved for that.
Yeah, you're going to handle that?
Yes. Thank you, County Attorney.
Then I will move forward with, I'll have discussions with the developer.
Okay.
And remind them that we have not fully accepted the roads. And I don't know if there's a way to put some sort of hold on selling remaining lots until that is accepted. And the primary thing for accepting it would be getting this erosion under control and stabilized. And potentially, might have to install new inlet, try to clean out, something like that, getting it back to how it was supposed to be.
Can you imagine, you have this beautiful pool, and here comes all this company that's... I mean, I'd feel a little upset.
And that person involved, that water is going through technically four inlets, so it kind of shows that these inlets are completely clogged or very underdesigned. There's some issues that need to be addressed. Okay, that's how I'll move forward then. All right, thank you. Other than that, real quick, with our, we received the temporary traffic signals, I got three quotes back from three different companies, two of them are close in price, within five hundred dollars, so now I'm just going to reach out to them and compare the different options, all the different units, and then go ahead and make our trouble signal. I'll be, once I move forward that, bring that in for official approval and not final process.
Is that the one we're sharing with the former county?
Yeah, we have to make it to them for ten years. If they want to use it, we're not using it, but they can.
I think that's great, yeah.
Do you guys have anything for me?
No, I haven't had time to check, really, so.
Okay, that's all right.
So the only thing I have is, I know we're behind on mowing and stuff, but there's some intersections and stuff that we should really get, forget about the side roads and stuff, but the intersections, get around some stop signs and things where you can't see them.
Well, we have our seasonal mower out, so we, we're full-time mowing right now. So any specifics, if you'd like to know, but I will tell them, basically pay the road intersection.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I saw you this morning, so that was...
And I did check out the road that we sprayed here, about two mils still, nice, it'll be good.
No ripples?
If he wants to come in and blade it now, or have to, or need to, the only person who lives on the road, he's out, I was happy with my traffic lane, he's, we would know a lot of, when he tears the rock up and stuff now, or grates it, the grass and stuff will, you'll never know what's in there. There's another one they've been spraying, it's on three hundred and Keys Avenue. I realize it's a dirt road, but I drove it down the other day, and just looked this way, when the leaves start slapping above me, it could be flat, dirt road.
Is that a little tall? Is that what you're saying?
The only thing I could say to do with it is spray it, and let it die, and then blade it, because if you try and blade it now, you'll have a dirt windrow, you won't be able to push it out, so. And the only people that go down there is my cop and I, and all the year to harvest, and the spring of the year to plant. That's not, that's their excess dump. It's in my property, I don't know where. Right now, the kids have a whole bunch of tires set up that can spin their motorbike through, and for the most part, they make a turn of my car, too.
Jake, I also wanted to ask you, I've been approached, um, remember last year how we had um, a meeting of the Enduro, uh, dirt bike racing?
Mm-hmm.
That's gonna be, um, Alex said it was gonna be in September.
Maybe I don't recall this. I did check in about whether on private property, you're saying on the roads?
Nope, nope, private property.
Okay.
Um, do you feel like we should have another meeting with him, Matt? Oh, he's gone. Okay. Is there a need for a permit for that, Deshawn? I need help from Jake.
That wouldn't involve our office at all. Uh, the most they would do off the roadway is just a grading permit. If they disturb more than acre or more, they have to control the erosion.
Okay, okay. But that is, that's all their private property. So I just didn't know if we feel like we should have another meeting altogether with the ambulance, the EMTs a little bit because he didn't want to cause any friction.
How would our department feel about, like, as far as closing roads or closing lanes or something like that?
Right, so it's on the advanced curve to go down in the Robonsee area is where we're at.
Mm-hmm.
Which is scared Deshawn to death going back in that area. She can't believe there's people living that far.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if we need to have, I mean, you could go around some corners pretty, pretty tight. Could need special signage. This is what he was asking for. Do we? I just didn't know if he wanted to be.
If you wanna have a meeting with our, I mean, I can serve it. Yeah, I have a problem.
Cause there's a lot of people involved.
You can't have city drivers out there just lead foot. You have to be careful of that.
And it's brown.
So we can put up caution signs or whatever if there's any of those traffic.
Okay.
Someone else.
Okay. And it's one day, but it's all day.
Okay.
Right. Okay.
All right, and if you hear, you know, the millings on East Beacon, still very much, we're ready to go on that. Um, the crusher for the company is down right now. Or it's not, the, the screen, screen it out. So basically, once they're up and running, we'll be good to go. We heard the codes that was thrown was now good. So kind of a major, so just kinda, we're kinda balls in their court, waiting for them to get their stuff fixed. It's right there. If you don't go to them, we're going all the way up to Omaha and just then our cost goes way up. So we're just gonna keep busy with other stuff until it's ready to go.
Times.
That's the deal.
We just can't really afford to leave them alone, yeah.
It just, it just doesn't make sense. If we have other stuff we can be doing, let's do that. And then when this is ready, post, please.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Jacob.
Did you give me a statement or anything else?
I think so.
Okay. You guys enjoy your day.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, small Jacob's here, if I can make it quick. On my subdivision, uh, George, it's an HGA retired. His workload went over Paul Gonzalez. He's supposed to get his job too, so he backed up, I'm backed up.
Who was taking over that then?
Uh, Paul Gonzalez, I don't know if that's him plus.
I'm meeting with him today at two o'clock.
I said before you did the work, make sure you understand the line.
Yeah.
To watch the green.
Yeah. No, that'll be good.
Hey, Mr. Clark. Uh, kids play. A big fan of them. Uh, to the degree y'all might have, or might not have been approached, uh, to make quality lives as part of our community, you have childcare, large childcare. Uh, to the degree that you can find some funds and to number out three hundred thousand dollars, they're looking for a million to be able to insert themselves into potential school buildings, potential buildings. So if you would just consider it, uh, I don't like asking for money unless I also know where to get money. So running into any trouble trying to figure out what pocket to pull from, if you need to pull from a pocket, let me know. Make some suggestions, but y'all are more deep into the meat, so you know where there is and there is blood in the term and there's no blood. So that's really all my consideration. Uh, they're coming down to a deadline where they're trying to find a million dollars. They, they can move forward with the grant and stuff like that. Just pushing. All right? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any question I wanna take on?
Mr. Honeyman, you're up next.
Uh, I guess the first thing I'd ask is three weeks ago, I presented with you a written resolution.
Tom, you can sit here and give.
You can't hear me?
Uh.
Uh?
Then I can't see you. So.
Yeah, I don't know. I didn't know I was gonna be on. Would you say I was on?
You too.
Yeah, I don't even know what that is.
Well, come visit us. If you would, please.
I'm Tom Honeyman. Haven't met you yet.
Deshawn.
I know. I was a good friend of the former county attorney and you, like she, are welcome to the Indian Creek Township meeting this fall.
Thank you.
She attended it and was very helpful. So we'll send you an invite. Sometimes we have people there, sometimes it's just us.
Tom, can I back you up?
Yes.
Since we've got an audience, but maybe they don't understand what we're here for, do you wanna read your letter of what you are trying to understand? I think it's a very good letter. Or no?
I don't care. Um.
Or just give us an outline?
What I wanted to ask first was the resolution, do you have, still have that? That was written, there's nine counties that have signed this.
The petition.
No. The resolution about eminent domain. Remember that? I just wondered where you were on that, if you'd read it. Montgomery County's gonna sign it today, if you can believe it. Yeah, I can't believe they sent this stuff to the governor. Uh, there's gonna be something else sent to the governor that they're not gonna like, but I can't tell you what it is.
So will we fire to this?
It would have been, was it three weeks ago, Lonnie?
She read last week.
It doesn't matter. I'm just encouraging you to show that to your county attorney. And there is a, a waiver that the county that wrote that, anybody can put their, any county can put their heading on it and use the word, it's very well. Just, uh, I'm just pushing on you a little here. Don't, you know what I'm talking about.
Definitely.
Oh, Carol, you want me to read this whole thing again? Will I be on TV again then?
Yes.
No.
Or do your, do your, uh, focal points or, I just think it's a very good letter.
Please, now, Richard, you don't want to send the last one. This is Stephanie Miller, who lives on the north side. She and her dad live right on the north side of, of Mid-America.
Steven Burschite.
Steven Burschite. Who you? Did you find it?
We're gonna go through this one here.
Okay. When I'm gone. Permanently, you're good?
No. No.
Sarah, um, I'll get my tongue shut. Sarah, this is Tom Honeyman. He's a guy that's a person who's good at the petition. She works for Mid-America Energy. She called me yesterday and says, I'm coming to the meeting. So if Mr. Honeyman has some certain questions he wants to ask. Prefer maybe to go out in the hall and do that after we have our discussion here, but.
Sure.
I wanted you to know that she's available for you to, uh, visit with.
Now, you are, who are you?
Yes, I'm with the.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you. I won't get up. I don't know you, sir.
I'm Matt Wyatt. I'm with, uh, Cali, I'm a builder in his own.
Building his own.
Matt Wyatt, Wyatt.
He comes from Montgomery.
From Lumbes originally.
Oh, okay. I always go back and see if I, like, who's the kid with the dump bodies down there? You know, the Hughes got to haul all the dirt. You said his name earlier. Like.
Before he like.
Yeah. See, I was hoping he'd be here because, is that Bobby's son?
Yes.
Oh.
So he lost his dad.
Wayne, Wayne.
Wayne.
Wayne was his.
I just remembered when I was on the FHA committee, um, I helped Bobby and his, his father keep farming.
Yeah.
It was a struggle. I remember his grandfather couldn't sign his name. He put an X. And when you're out of Iowa State, that was a shock. I thought everybody could read and write. Couldn't. He goes, is this good enough? And he just put an X there. I went, yeah, that's good enough. So is Roger Wyatt related to you?
No.
No.
Cause that is Wyatt. This is Nathan Wyatt.
So getting back, uh, I don't know, did you, this evidently was everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, we saw it.
Okay. Um, again, I guess my concerns are that, um, ori- originally, there was security in property being zoned as agricultural. And since we are farmers, come on in. Since we are farmers, we don't keep in touch with everything that's going on over here or in the, in the, up in Des Moines. So sometimes things get changed or altered that we're not aware of. Um, the auditor has stated that they had trouble getting any response from the eastern side of the county. Evidently, as this was going on, there were meetings and things that weren't attended until the meeting of the Board of Adjustment. Is that correctly? There was a public meeting that Stephanie went to and the people that surrounded that, that four hundred acres. And, um, in my comments, they were treated like prisoners. Not as citizens. So that was another thing that I was worried about was the lack of communication between the east side of the county and the west. Uh, you get much ten miles outside of Glenwood, I would say. Richard travels the country more than I do. When he goes over there, nobody knows what goes on. Absolutely no one. It's like, uh, it's worse than Park County. And Park County has east and west. Government, government. Um, the third thing was just the fact that, uh, you, we have a secure feeling that we're zoned agriculture. Um, most of the neighbors that live, I farm in section twenty-two, which would be the one right to the east of sixteen and and twenty-one. And, uh, so Randy Kenope is on the west end of that section, and that's the only actual resident other than Burschites is affected on the north end. That was and is a very good farm to the north. That CSR on that ridge is probably some of the best in Mills County if you looked it up. We are looking it up.
Yes.
That's two, uh, things. Number three is I don't understand why you would have to ruin that farm when there's all kinds of federal and state property over here on the river, which is already leveled, it's grown up weeds that could be solar farms and tell you the truth, if you took care of the weeds, nobody cared it was over. Um, I don't want very strongly this county to turn Highway thirty-four corridor into an industrial site. I was on the original when Mills County was not zoned at all. Um, Swiftco was, the manager was a guy named Marty Schuker. Richard goes back that far.
Yeah.
Who the county spent money for him to portray. And he did an excellent job in sending out and feeling out the communities. This is what's gonna happen with the interstate, which was basically bare at that time. And the county said that they wanted green spaces zoned so that it wasn't solid uh, industrial all the way from border to border. They didn't get that done. And as you can tell, it's probably gonna be solid industry from one end to the other. I wouldn't like to see that happen on Highway thirty-four. It would ruin the county. All these crazy bikers from California and New Jersey and Washington DC and Canada. When you visit with them, they said, the greatest thing about riding in Iowa is the corn. They never see corn. And I'm going, we, oh, well, we see it every year, every day. For us, it's when we travel to California, it's seeing the ocean. Well, to them, it's corn. I just, and I'm worried if it gets started, just as you heard the engineers, they have problems with things that are happening, even though they're outside their ordinances. This board and this county has trouble figuring out how are we gonna stop it? If you don't, if Mid-America doesn't fulfill all its obligations and all the little boxes they checked, how are they gonna come in and say, oh, you did this wrong. We're gonna unplug your solar panels? Yeah, they won't do that. Uh, what variances over the years are you constantly gonna be after? Because the windmills in central Iowa now, there's variances in all those counties to extend the prop width. They want taller, bigger diameter props. You're only gonna clear the ground about fifty feet. That's another thing. I'm a person that I would rather not do it than get into it and then have problems. That's kind of the way I've been at this farming deal for fifty-five years. Richard could tell you sometimes it's just better not to do something than get into it, either go bankrupt or it costs a lot of money to get out. Uh, seemed like there was something else that was major.
There were questions that were asked, but answers were not given at the Board of Adjustments meeting.
She was at the meeting, I was not, man. Uh, sorry. Um, I think the biggest thing was, you know, you know, I think I stated in here, I'm not against it. Lanny Goy, I've known him for fifty years. I knew his father. Uh, Richard knew his father. Um, they're, they're good community people. Uh, Lanny has no one that wants to evidently carry on the farm. I do, Richard does. And we're fortunate that there's people that wanna do that kind of work and it's hard work. Um, I, I have no, you know, we live in a republic. If he wants to sell his land for three times what it's worth, that, and somebody buys it, that's his fund. My point is, if it was zoned agricultural, I don't wanna see solar panels, windmills, naked girls, whatever else that they're gonna wiggle. It's almost like ag zoning is a default. And I don't think it shouldn't be because I don't think those items could handle, be handled in residential zoning. I don't think they could be handled in industrials. When we weren't zoned, we were headed for problems. And I thought Marty Schuker did a real good job. I don't, I imagine that report's still available, isn't it, Richard?
Yep. Somewhere.
Um, I know Charlie, who you guys are way too young to know, but these people know. Who was an old time cattle feeder over on the Indian Creek Bottom. He conned me into one day that I would suggest to the board, uh, the zoning board that was entertaining Mr. Schuker, that we build a fence right east of Malvern and put a toll gate like Exarban did on the South Omaha Road and charge people from the east side of the county to come, or the west side of the county to come to the east side. But it didn't fly. They, they went along there. Got a good laugh, but they wouldn't fly. And of course, Charles lives on the east end of town. Um, I don't, help me out here. I don't wanna go on forever. I just went around and interviewed all these people because I didn't get to go to meeting and they're my neighbors anyway. I had a ball that day. I told my wife I'd be back in an hour. I didn't get back till nine thirty that night. Um, those are the biggest things, the thirty-four corridor. And I'm sure if you look at the map, there's hundreds of acres. Maybe the flood ground isn't available. I know my son, my youngest son, uh, commissioned into the Navy and sailed around the solar panels that are out in sea from Norway. So I don't know if floods a problem or not, but it doesn't bother Norway. There are windmills around. And if you're on a destroyer, and he was a navigator, he said, you, you know, at night, you gotta be aware of those things. They're well lit, but you, some of the charts don't show them all. So um, I didn't know that. I thought maybe that there was a reason that you couldn't build on that property because of flood. In California, he lived in San Diego for six years. They put him on the, over the parking lots of the airports. You park them. They put them on, there's not a lot of tall buildings in California, but most of the good sized buildings have solar panels on them. And again, my neighbor, who's a retired commander in the Navy, right? Just two hundred yards west of fifty-nine and thirty-four, there's a guy there and he has solar panels on. West of 59 and 34, there's a guy there and he has solar panels on his shop. I'm not against that. I mean, residential, if you want to, if you want to. Sell credits, McGrew Brothers, north of where she lives, they have a windmill and they sell credits back to Mid-America. Not against that. I'm all for being able to do what you want to do on your own property, which I'm sure is what you're basing your argument on. But what I'm worried about is, that means that I can do anything on my property. And I'm zoned agriculture. So I want to stay, and my occupation is production, agriculture. And I want there to be some sovereignty. I want there to be some teeth in it. The other thing that I was questioned about was when I said free money. And what I was referring to there, I mean, it's a, when you get old, you just kind of lump things off. You know, this all goes back to the Energy Act of 2005. It's not a Democratic thing. It's not a Republican thing. It started out in that Energy Act of 2005 that the Republicans decided that they wanted to make sure that we were energy efficient. And we were less dependent on foreign oil. At that time, we were actually importing natural gas, which is very odd, but again, if you have boys that are at sea. Oh yeah, we've seen these huge vessels that bring natural gas to the United States into the Gulf of Mexico. That has gotten morphed through Obama and then finally in Biden, there's all these tax credits like the 45Q for this crazy pipeline that this guy's going to build. There's, there's up to 35 to 40% repayment for what he's going to spend. That's what I meant by free money. Now, that's not to say that Richard and I as farmers. That there's not things available through investment credit in our income tax, but it has nothing to do with buying land. Which he'll tell you, and I can tell you, having a young farmer, who is a veteran, who's still, he's on global watch today. Making your life safe. You can't afford to buy a farm. If you can't afford, as a business, to invest in your own business, how do you expand? Am I not right, Richard?
Yeah, correct.
Again, I'm for freedom of speech. I'm for you guys buying the property. I just wish that. Lanny or you guys would have actually canvassed the neighborhood and found out before you bought it. We didn't want it. Not to say that I'm against solar energy or renewable energy. It is an intermittent energy form, but I'm pretty sure. That Warren is driven by the fact that there's a lot of money in the government to do those things. But that's, that's what I meant by free money. To, to define it more, I hope I did a little bit.
And I really appreciate your comments. And we, we're listening. So I can touch a little bit on the project. It was making circle of active meeting around the board of prefers, but we did, I mean, just real quick. We did choose that location because of the existing transmission. That's why it was identified. In order to make the solar project economical, we couldn't build additional transmission lines. We could use what existed. So you have a nice transmission line running ourselves through there.
On 390th, I think.
Correct, yeah. We could easily connect to that. It would accept the load that we're looking to put on it. And we're able to get an interconnection queue point right there. So that's why the property was connected.
So will those kind of get free electricity then?
No, I mean.
Will Randy Canope get free electricity?
I mean. Like any other generating facilities, like who lives next door, they don't get free electricity.
Really? So will that power be used locally or is it sent to Texas?
So we touched on this a lot at the Board of Adjustment meeting, how the electricity grid works in Iowa. I think we talked about it for 15 minutes, at least maybe more than that. But Mid-America has to sell all of their power they generate. They sell all of it. And then it gets, we buy back what we use for our customers. So, and then it goes to the, I mean, electricity plug jobs go to the closest place they're needed. So.
I know you're highly regulated.
Oh yes, absolutely, yeah.
If I may, actually, questions were asked because I asked them. What percentage of the power generated by this 50 megawatt facility will stay in Iowa? I was not given an answer. By my research, I was, I came up with 50,000 homes can be generated, can receive energy from a 50 megawatt facility. I was actually scoffed at. Well, it's not that number. Well, what is it? I was not given an answer. So they were saying up to 9,000 homes in Iowa will receive energy from this facility. That's 18% if the 50,000 number is correct. I asked to be corrected. If it's not that, what is it? What is the actual percentage that will stay in our state? Because we are using, they are using Iowa property for this facility. I wasn't given an answer.
I do know that's true, that they buy it back. Unlike California doesn't do that, but Mid-America, and I don't think. I go back to Iowa power. And I don't think Iowa power was that way. It was regulated. But I think it was a real high percentage of what was generated in Iowa was used fairly locally because the grid wasn't as complete. But I might be wrong. That's 40, 50 years ago for me. Yeah, the other thing that wasn't in the paper, Dave McGrew, who went to the meeting. Is the Eastern Mills County naturalist. He is not married, so he wanders around at night and hunts coyotes and. Lives with the beavers and I don't know what he does, but he's the one that, he and neighbor Gravit. There's a cottonwood tree, I don't know if they told you about, about straight west of Randy's house. On Douglas Creek that rivals the biggest tree in Iowa. Diameter is 28 feet. And their question is, so are the trees going to stay on Douglas Creek? Now evidently, from what I've heard, it's going to be mainly north of the highway, which is of course the better ground. So maybe the tree south on Douglas Creek won't be damaged, but it would be a tragedy for as long as that tree's been there. If something happened to that tree. And I'm not a tree hunk. I got cows, a lot of cows, and I don't have any trees in my pasture. Because they stand under and make a mess. But in the natural, to the naturalist, that's an amazing thing to have a, a living organism that old. So the dean.
The trees on our property, in Rick's property? Okay, yeah. So we, we committed in the Board of Adjustment meeting and in our preliminary site plan, we're not clearing the trees along them.
Douglas Creek.
Douglas Creek, correct. We actually have fencing. The property, the panels are going to be set back from that, too.
So right across.
Yeah, they're set back.
Right across from Douglas Creek. Which Gravit owns now, was the Willie Douglas Farmstead, which is gone. And that's why that's named Douglas Creek.
Okay.
Just, I mean, they were, that's back in the twenties and thirties. And that again, it'd be about straight west and a little south of Randy's house, across that green.
So Sarah, I remember that night, you were saying, you're not going to use all 400 acres. Is that correct?
Correct.
Not right now.
What, yeah. So what are you planning on using? And then what are you planning? For the ground that you're not using?
Sure. So along the waterway, that's the same natural. We have.
Are we on the north side?
Um, sorry, north and south.
South side.
Yeah. And then the south side, our panels, right now, they're planned for. I think it was a 50 acre we're not quite using. Right across Randy's house. We pulled away from Randy's house. North and west of that. So that area there, we would love to still farm. Keep the same tenant, let it be farmed out.
They have an excellent tenant.
Yeah.
He has raised the productivity. It'd be Jim Gregory.
Oh yeah, yeah.
They hauled cattle in the lower on that for 10 years. My ancestors owned the north side.
Okay.
That was Warren's property. And he was married to Helen Honeyman, who would have been a cousin to my dad. Helen Warren. He was not a good farmer. And he exasperatingly sold, his, his father was a horticulturist. And that's why you see where that, that little place they park things, there's two cedar trees. He had goldfish ponds. And when we were kids, you know, there was cement rivers that ran all over. He had an outdoor tennis court. But they were not farmers, even though it was a very good farm. And they sold it to Richard Goy. And that's how it got into that process. I just wish that the money that was spent would have been spent where we have so many idle acres in Mills County. It would have also put it back on the tax rule, right, Richard? Does the United States government pay property tax? Do they? No. You will.
We'll pay replacement tax, yeah.
Yeah. Property tax, what we call it. So if you did invest over along the river, which in 2019, there was hundreds of acres claimed. That would put money back into the county, which I'm always interested in because we have about the same acreage in Mills and Montgomery. We basically farm on each side of the line. My youngest son lives in Montgomery. And we're also fighting the pipeline because three quarters of a mile east of Emerson, that pipeline's going right up. The east side of one of our farms. So we've been struggling with them for three years. You're, you're very decent compared to Mr. Rastner, I'll tell you. And if, and if you run into him with your transmission lines, you will know it, if he gets his way. So anyway, I'd be glad to have coffee with you. My son's scooping corn and I do not want to go scoop corn in the bin, so I will talk to you. What about, what are your skills? He's 33.
He's hearing that right now. He's probably, Dad, we're going to talk.
Does he know about Zoom? Oh, I'm sure he does. When he came back from the Navy after six years, he's been around the world twice. The local farm boys that knew him were worried that, because I still planted with a, what, 40 year old tractor and a 20 year old planter. You know, I got it done. Well, he bought it, the company bought a newer tractor and a new planter with GPS. And I heard these guys at the Emerson. Group worried about if Bill could figure that out. And I just couldn't stand it. I said. He drives the United States warship around in the ocean. There's no rocks, trees or highways. He went in and out of the Straits of Vermont 70 times and never hit anything. I'm pretty sure he can plant corn. And so far, he's.
He's done a pretty good job.
Done a good job. You'd be interested in me. Nice kid. Very nice.
But yeah, Tom, I would love for you to converse with Sarah.
Glad to. The worst, these people all think it's a done deal. And that scares me. That, that things happen in the county that the people that are paying the money don't know about. It's not border action.
She can answer your questions.
I would love that.
Yeah.
Because I run a post office in Emerson, so I'm information central.
Okay.
For our side of the county. So I would love to be able to have some answers for people.
There you go, Amy. There's one source right there.
So my question to Tom, last time he was here, he said, it's been in both papers. They went to every city in the county and they did different meetings and, and they've had many hearings and. Extensive for two years at least, I want to say, on some of the, some of the topics you had, if not more.
Were they attended?
Yes. So my question is, how do we? He goes, well, we don't get on Facebook. No, that's fine. It's on our website. It's on, it's in the papers. What else are? How would you suggest? Because we do want information to be throughout the county.
So for me, communication is key.
Right.
I'm not talking about, we're going to put it in a paper. How many people read a lot of people?
Right. So how do you, they have meetings to in every city, so.
I can honestly say, no one has ever approached me in the local post office. I mean, if people want information spread, they come to me and I'm like, do you want people to know? Yes, they want people to know. People don't. All right, I've been there for five years. This is my community. My parents moved here in 68. They moved over to that side of the county in 2005. You know, this is something, we didn't even know about the Board of Adjustments meeting because we weren't sent a letter. But our neighbors 100 feet to the south were, because they're within their area. We were 100 feet to the north, so we didn't get a letter. Anyone north of us didn't get a letter.
I did get a letter. I just was unable to attend.
So I was told that day by my neighbor, are you going to this meeting? We don't know what's going on. Can you find information out for us? I said, I'll absolutely be there. So I was there. I had questions. You know, guys, here's the deal. I'm an, I'm an alternative energy advocate, but not on this level. Solar was never meant to be a mega facility. You ever hear of too much is a good thing? This was, they were, they're, this is not environmentally sound. There's too much of it. It was meant to be on a smaller level, on individual homes. Taking homes off the grid so that then energy was allowed for people who didn't have solar. So that more energy was available. It's not meant to be funded by taxpayer money for one, then for us to buy it, then for us to have to pay for it again, then for us to lose land. You know, you talk about farming acres and how important it is to have food sources and that. You don't want AI probably to be involved because you don't want them to shut down elevators. This is taking valuable farmland that grows our, it grows our food. You know, this is some, and it's, you know, questions were asked, were not answered. We were dismissed. We were ignored. We were pretty much just laughed at at that meeting. And that's how the majority of us felt because we got together afterwards and talked about it at the Board of Adjustments meeting. We do talk, but we need to actually have personal communication. Have somebody come in, you say, oh, we're going to have a meeting here. When did you post it? Where did you post it?
They posted it several places, I believe. That was our department to do that.
But you know.
To know that it was out there.
And it is. Communication is a problem, you know.
Like around your city council, I mean.
But you see, the city at Emerson doesn't care. They don't care. You know how many people voted in the primary from Emerson?
Yeah.
Very low.
No, you know why? Because they built a community building that a guy sued him that he couldn't get his wheelchair into. So the voting is not in the city. It's at Indian Creek, which is two miles. Those people are not going to drive that two miles. And that is, 390th is two miles west of Emerson. They don't care. You can have a circus. You could have a nudie bar out there. They don't care in Emerson. And they don't care in Malvern. Out of sight, out of mind. We care because we're in that profession and it is our neighborhood. It, it will affect us. We don't know how it'll affect property value. The other thing that I really resent is if you think about this. The federal government is selecting what type of energy they want. There is no 45Q, 45Z for nuclear energy. None. It is also highly regulated. It is also fairly inexpensive. When there's a world crisis, they wheel one of the seven nuclear carriers into the bay and plug it in. And they use one nuclear reactor and it supplies energy for hundreds of miles. But there's, there's no, there's no incentive to put a paddle wheel in the Missouri River that goes around every day. When I was married out of college, I went to northern Wisconsin. And I went east and I went up to Rock River. And in every one of those little German towns, there was a dam and a wheel. They made their own energy. As soon as Consolidated took over that big energy pool out of Chicago, all those were dismantled. Each one of those towns was self-sufficient and, and the water is still going down the river. When we fly to see my oldest son, who was in the Navy 28 years in Fallon, Nevada, we have to fly to Vegas and then to Reno. And we fly for two hours over the most desolate desert you ever saw in your life. There's no roads, rabbits, nothing. There are also no windmills and no solar panels. And the wind blows every day in the desert and the sun shines. And you can see Hoover Dam out of the airplane. So it's a question to me, eventually, water and food will be an issue in the United States. And I'm not going to live very much longer. I'm right there with Richard. He and I'll probably go hand in hand. Maybe, maybe I'll go first because Richard is, well, taken care of.
I feel sorry for you, Tom.
I know. It's going to be an issue. I'm all for protecting clean water. I do everything possible to protect the water source on our farm. And what runs off of our farm. I don't like the federal government, people in Washington DC. Picking out, oh, we're going to do this because it's politically correct. And this, this last administration has just ballooned. As your bosses, or if you're into the political side of it, would know. And I think I said in there, if you look up Forbes magazine about 10 years ago, your boss said that none of this was feasible unless you can get the taxpayer to pay for it. That's printed. And eventually Biden administration said, okay, we'll pay for it. So I'm sure that's what the push is. It makes these guys really tough, hard, hard decisions. Not buying pickups for the engineer. New office equipment for the county attorney. Those are easy. These, the pipeline, windmills, solar, those are huge decisions that will impact this county for 50 years. If you don't believe me. If you don't believe me, stop and ask Richard about how many years ago that the county sold their landfill to a private company? Because he lives and looks at it every day.
The county never owned the landfill. It was named after the county, but we never owned the landfill.
Well, what did Brant get out of it?
His big deal was closure, post-closure. He pushed, he always said the landfill company, Mr. Mott, was putting, not putting money aside to close, paid to close the landfill. And that's what got him into trouble in the court. They almost took his farm. Now, the way it's set up and the way DNR runs it, how we get paid, I don't have much problem with looking at that mess. Well, I can hold shade. No, it's really interesting to see.
See, I always thought the county owned that. Montgomery County owned theirs.
Yeah.
I don't know, they don't now do that.
Well, it is a collection point. And then they haul all their trash from there to here.
You know, we have Kansas City, everybody. Well, anyway, so don't use that example. That's, damn it, Richard, you shoot me down all the time.
Well, no, and, well, I'll tell you what they have done though. They put in a forty-million-dollar methane plant. And we, I mean, I live close enough that I can smell the methane. It's not the dump that's smelling. It's the methane that they clean their filters out and stuff, you know, every once in a while. But they're pushing it to either the east coast or the west coast.
I just know that forty years ago, that hole in the ground was not that big.
No. Yeah, I'll tell you what, those are done.
I don't want it. I don't have anything else. I'll certainly meet with you guys. And I don't mean to take up your time. I would certainly encourage you.
We appreciate that concern and being a spokesman for the eastern part of the county. I do know that the letter sent out to all the residents within a certain distance of the project when you're going through this. So what they did with them, we don't know. And whether they paid any attention to them or not, we don't know that either. But evidently, they did because not many people showed up.
Well, if I may say, I can say this from my own personal experience. When I do my job and I'm doing it well, my bosses leave me alone. Nobody comes to see me. And if nobody calls me and nobody sees me, I think I'm doing okay, you know? I just keep tuning right along. We did, I can honestly say, people didn't know about this because now it's a big talk. Now people are talking. And yes, even in town, people are talking. And I would just, I wanted, I would love to have information. And I look at the Board of, am I here? You know, the last time I was at a Board Supervisor's meeting was twenty-seven years ago.
Oh, wow.
I was standing here with my daughter, who was two years old at the time. You know, and it was because it was something that was going on on our side of the county. They wanted to turn the boards around the booster station in Rattler. Okay? That was the last time I was at a Board Supervisor's meeting. Do I check in periodically and see what you're doing? Do I know who you are? Absolutely. Am I gonna bother you? No, because you're doing your job and you're representing us. You are our line of defense for our way of life. And when we don't bother you, that doesn't mean that we don't know you or that we don't appreciate you. It means that you're doing what you're supposed to be doing for us. So we leave you alone.
No, but we appreciate, we really would like to see more people show up at our meetings and have concerns and contribute to them. You know, we make a lot of decisions here, big or small, or however you wanna put it. And some of them really do, can either harm or make the community better. And it's not an easy job. I don't care. Everybody says, oh, you just go to work on Tuesday and improve the roads' conditions and that's it.
No, this was, this was a much better atmosphere than the Board of Adjustments meeting. So I do absolutely appreciate that and thank you for that.
That's why she came.
I mean, this is my first day of sabbatical. I've had a day off forever and I'm here.
Dave McGrew couldn't come because he's scooping corn. And Clint Ruby, or Clint Gravit, who you know, just said, ah, they're gonna do what they wanna do. So the other thing that really worries me in America is, and I've, is the apathy. We can't get people to vote. There's, Amy, there is, if those efforts were there. As a trustee, we legally have to notify people when we're gonna have the meeting for, to plan the budget of the township. The trustees take care of the fire and rescue and cemeteries that the rural people use in the township. And they're paid to entities. And we go above and beyond. We really only have to post at the courthouse, but who drives from Emerson, Claire, what is it? Twenty miles over here to read the little three-by-five card? So we put it in the post office. We put it, I don't know if Mary Jo's putting it online. I am not of that generation. I'm seventy-five. This online thing is very foreign to me. I depend on my son for that. I don't really know what email is, even though I have it. He'll say, did you check your email? And I'm going, I don't know. Did I? You have something on email. Now, these guys use it, but see, and the Navy uses it, but I don't. That's not part of my culture. My mother lived, be ninety-seven, and read the Des Moines Register and the World Herald every day. The day she died, the newspaper was laying on her face. So that was her source of information. Mine, I guess, is the post office, radio. You know, it's a different deal. I'll help you however you wanna do it. If we have to rent or buy one of these flashing signs that's on the highway for rag drive, then I'll help you do it. Might be the only way we get through to them. But those are people that are part of the county. And their job is to protect those people. Under homeland rule, that's their number-one job. And I'm not saying that you're an intruder or you're offensive. All I'm saying is, it's not what the community thought was ag-zoned. That looks to me like industrial. That's very, I can't say, I don't wanna take up any more time.
And when questions are not answered, it gives everyone a little bit of...
Yep, it should not have been an uncomfortable situation. But, you know, we have that even at township meetings. People come in and the fire departments come in, they wanna buy a new fire truck. And you go, how much do you think the budget is? Well, the valuation is seven-point-eight million. I said, well, that's not the township. You know what I'm talking about. But?
But they don't understand.
No, they just want a new truck. And they wanna live in the firehouse. And they want a fire pole. I wanted a fire pole in my house. My wife wouldn't let me pull one in.
Okay.
Not for that.
Sorry, so Claire, was it Mr. McGrew that would know about the cotton?
Cottonwood. Yeah, I got a picture on my phone, but I don't bring my phone in here because I can't run it. I'll show you a picture of it. And I'll give you his phone number.
Yes.
Yeah. The last I knew, Ian Gravit were in touch with the state DNR, who is the official measurer. Like, two farmers can't measure around a tree. They have to be there. But I'm pretty sure those two clowns have measured. I think he said it was twenty-eight-plus feet around it. It's huge. I think that you should go ahead and look for another site and be a farmer, landowner. Let Jim Gregory farm it and find out what we're on, how we make a living. You won't believe how little money you make off of the best farmland in Mills County. Will they, Richard?
No. Just keep farming until the money's gone.
Yeah, that's what we do.
Yeah.
That's why we have cows. We're busy all the time. So on Sunday, they're out. Yeah. Nice to make you vote. And I'll be glad to meet with you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you very much.
I still have to meet with Katie, so I will. We'll get a solution.
You're good. She is up today.
Oh, I know. I can't talk to her today.
Yeah.
I gotta go talk to the clerk of court because they said they're sending me checks. And one of them hasn't been cashed, so I, and I don't know where it's at.
From yours?
No, it's from the kid that stole all the stuff from Mary's house.
Oh, pardon me.
You know, oh, you know, Smith, the Smith boy. They send me three dollars about it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out, though. Appreciate it. Really, you're up next.
Yes.
Thank you. How are we doing?
Thank you, DeShawn. Appreciate it.
Is there more on pages?
Yeah.
So give us the rundown. How's it going?
Uh-huh.
Um, pretty well. Um, I met with Amy a couple weeks ago because we talked about this budget. I actually have a packet for you guys. I have the end-of-year stuff from last fiscal year in here. I have our program outcomes for public health. I have the updated grant spreadsheet. So we ended last fiscal year. Our expenses totaled to be one million, four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, uh, hundred-and-fifty-three dollars. And then our revenues totaled to be eight-hundred-and-twelve-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine. The difference between those, which would be the county dollars that we used, is six-hundred-and-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-four. The budget was set up to have you guys, you guys budgeted six-hundred-and-twelve thousand. We did not use ten-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars.
But you did. Because your bills, when you brought them in in July, were ten-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seven dollars that were held from the previous year. So you didn't pay them in that time period.
They accrued in the time period that they paid out of.
But they were spent in that term period, yes?
Yes, that's...
Okay.
I was just going off of what these.
Right.
She said.
And it's just because they were held and they weren't, and there was over ten hundred dollars that they used for that. But that's, when it shows on our side, that's how it shows.
Who would have paid those this year?
Yes.
Yeah, they're...
Well, they have to be accrued.
They're paid out of this year. They're accrued from last year. That's how, that's why I was going off of, sure, the numbers on here.
I just bet them wasn't a surplus.
The updated grant spreadsheet shows everything that has been billed through the end of the year and what we've received. And then any outstanding payments or unspent balance for the different grants. I will point out the well grants, the remaining, the unspent balance for that, that twenty-four thousand, that will be going to building and zoning, correct? Yeah. So that won't, we won't be getting that. That will just go to building and zoning.
It'll go into his part, his son's department.
Yep.
So not just for that.
Right. Yep. Otherwise, all the grants have been billed out. We're just waiting on some quarterly payments to come in.
And some of these you build out monthly, is that right?
Most of them are billed monthly. There's a few that are billed quarterly.
Okay.
All the grants seem to be flowing in a year, assuming you had...
Yep, yes, they are. Um, after that, we've got our program outcomes for the different departments. So the homemaking services, served fifty-one adults, did one-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-one visits. Two-hundred-and-sixty bas were done, a hundred-and-twenty-six transports. We did ten vaccine clinics. We had seventeen new admissions throughout the new year, the last fiscal year.
And what does that mean?
Um, new homemaking clinics.
Okay.
Our circles for support, community dinners. We had twenty-seven community dinners.
And you're on the page where it starts out with nursing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. We had twenty-seven community dinners. They did ten community events and reached three-hundred-and-forty-two adults and a hundred-and-eighty-three kids. Our Family Matters program, which does the support groups, had thirty-four support groups and reached two-hundred-seventy-seven adults and a hundred-and-eighty-three kids between, oh, sorry, a hundred-and-thirteen one-on-one individual recovery and then the thirty-four was the support groups. We have our tobacco program that goes in. I know Jody goes into the school. She does classes. She helped, does like health classes. She's been in, they're learning these films. Our Nest program, serving sixty-two adults, fifty kids, reaching thirty-two families, had sixty-nine one-on-one sessions and then twenty-four mass parenting classes. T-Pal is the program that's done at the alternative school. She had fifteen classes and reached twelve adults, seventeen kids. Our mentoring program, that's kind of tied with the Family Matters Support Group, did thirteen community groups and reached sixty-one kids. Parents as teachers did two-hundred-and-fifteen, two-hundred-and-fifty-one one-on-one visits, eleven parenting groups, reaching thirty-two adults and thirty-eight kids and twenty-five families. We had our quarterly Mills County Central Music Coalition. We have four of those. The Healthy Mills County Coalition had four. And then the emergency preparedness had their five coalition meetings, one inspection, six drills, one E and S. Max environmental reports behind that for the month of June. Well testing, thirty-three well tests. Two well permits were issued. Well, testing, thirty-three well tests, two well permits were issued, we had two dog bites that have both been resolved. One pool inspection, bags of different bits. Any questions?
I think I'll just bring this along to the meeting time.
Yep.
If I'm really going to have it.
I'll have it at the meeting.
Good deal.
Yeah.
Good. Jill's sick.
Yep, she told me that.
Okay. Hopefully she gets along a lot better in almost, almost a week.
Yes, that a week. Hello? I guess.
They claim it's a, it's a COVID-like, they test positive for COVID and it affects muscles, you feel weak, tired, no energy. Maybe next day you have energy and try to do something. I don't know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is good to see.
Yeah, I plan on doing this once a month.
Okay.
Once a month you do it, good.
Okay.
Once a month to be fine, you got, I don't think you get done, so.
Okay, what else do you guys want to say?
I'm, I'm, I'm good with this.
We haven't ever seen this, so this is interesting.
I'm good.
So.
Good.
This is nice.
Yeah, I'll keep on going with it.
Okay, great. So I guess I'm rather concerned when Amy, you said, now that they paid their bills and that was ten thousand, how much?
Nine hundred and seven dollars.
So. Is this causing a problem?
Well.
Now we would be like three hundred dollars.
More to the next fiscal year.
Oh, okay, so then it's.
But, um, it, it is, and, and she's aware of it, she's working on it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tight.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, and then we are looking at doing the budget amendment in September, correct?
Somewhere along in there, we, we've got some other ones that we have to do some amendments on and we're, it's, it costs a lot to publish this and stuff, we're trying to put it all in one.
Okay.
It won't be just public health, there'll be some other things that we have to do that.
Okay.
We've been surprised at that, so.
That's to happen. Okay.
Okay.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you, Brad.
Yes, thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, guys, thanks.
Mr. Roman, we're down to general discussion, is that where you are? You wanna sit over there and have general discussion, or you wanna come to the table?
Oh. Sit there awhile, so.
I was like, Chris, sorry.
Enjoy riding a bike this weekend, were ya?
Motorcycle, motorcycle.
He just has a lot of people out of.
Motorcycle, out there, yeah. I just wanted to come in and touch base, I want to, I want to thank you guys, I got a message back from everybody who wanted you guys. Quick, sense of seventy-five minutes, for the lights around the table, or around the lake, and seven for the, um, disc golf course, and I don't know, if you guys throw this, get all the, even go up there and take a look. It's ninety, ninety percent completed.
Good.
Yeah, it's pretty cool, so I just wanted to come in and touch base and say, we're ready to accept your money now, this year, so. I've, I've been asked about it a couple of times, and I said, I'm just going to the meeting, I said, Jack.
Good.
I was gonna get on the agenda and all that stuff, and then there's usually, usually at the beginning of the meetings, you can say, okay, is there, was that a little bit dressed up, I don't know, until the end.
We just wanted you to wait.
It's very interesting.
Well, I will tell you, you, you laugh, uh, the next day we had a, I'm trying to think of what I went to, but anyway, the big discussion was disc golf, there are some states where it has taken off.
Oh, it's, oh yeah. The amount of use that that thing is getting right now, Ron Maddox says, he cannot believe how many people are up there.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
It's a young person's game, it's not.
There's, there's people that are my age up there, I think they're insane, but you know, hey, more power to them. And the one thing about it is that this course here, it's, it, it's as challenging as you want it to be. And, cause what happened was, we've got the one tee box, and then there's a basket here and a basket here. So the first time around, you shoot at the white ones, and then you make an eighteen hole course, and the second time, you shoot at the yellow ones. So there's actually an eighteen hole course, it isn't like you go back and play, at the golf course here, you play the blues, and then you play the whites. Well, here it's, it's the same tee box, and then these baskets are movable if they need, and they're removable in case something has to happen, if they need to go, so. But we still have to get the signs completed, and then we still have to get, uh, we've seeded down three of the tee boxes, and then there's gonna be.
Get a little bit more.
Yeah, it's, it's really pretty interesting, I, it's really cool.
Thank you, Randy, for doing that.
Well, that, we've been talking about it, and actually it's Vanessa coming to me, and it was kind of her baby.
Okay.
She came to me and I said, go for it, I've got enough, you, you know, I'll help you, but it's yours. And then, so she got some people that are involved and interested, and there's new faces that are interested, and new faces are involved in community stuff now, and it's like, it's like the public, I mean, that thing exploded. Yeah. It's, 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 there's, it's always full. Yeah. It's always. Yes. Yeah, right. They, they.
Yes.
I haven't been able to talk for it. Yeah, the ownership is. You, I hope they realize that there's other things other than pickable, like the, the pickleball. Oh, the, and as I, I, I tell Jack, yes, it's, I, I love your passion, thank you. But I hope you understand that every time I talk to somebody, the baseball softball club, they've got passion, and they want everything just right for that. Oh, by the way, the soccer moms, they want everything just right, everything, oh, by the way, there's Harley Park, and my God, we really, that's great, ready to go, five, oh, then there's City Park. And how come the lake isn't just right, you know, that thing needs to be just perfect and all that. And everybody you deal with has got passion, and you guys know what that's like, because the only time you ever see anybody is when somebody's got a passion about their topic.
Can't find money.
Yeah, that's, it's only money, don't worry about it. Paper, right? It's only freaking.
Taxing dollars, well, at worst.
A quarter isn't a quarter anymore, I don't know, what about six cents worth of?
That's where, it, to me, it's frustrating, I, and I've been trying to get the change, but right now, anything over a thousand dollars has to go to the city council to approve, well, that's a twenty-five-year-old. It's a limit, you know? Now it's twenty, it should be twenty-five hundred, this, that, this is what we need to spend, instead of waiting, getting through. Can't get a hotel for thirty-nine bucks a night. Yeah. If you do, you don't want it.
Maybe carry out with the boat.
But I don't think.
Anyways, that's why I was here, for I just wanted to say, we're ready to accept your money when you're ready to write checks, so.
Okay.
They've been asking me about it, the lights are gonna be delivered, oh, well, they were, they're actually being made in Vancouver, and they were sitting in customs. And so, they've been having, going back and forth, talking to it and stuff, but the poles are coming, and then, the poles are in the US, and, but those are gonna be in addition to the solar. The solar panels on top of the light that charges the battery.
He shows the picture.
Those are nice, I, I think that's.
So we just put the pole in, or is it gonna be cemented in?
It's gonna be, I think, a cement.
Okay. Base.
Base, and then the pole will be on top of that, and, and it's just gonna, instead of trying to keep it in a straight line, it's just gonna follow the path and so on. And that's gonna be the first half, and then the next time, look for the, to get the upper half done, up inside. We'll get that going.
Oh, you're doing the backside first?
No.
No.
The leg side first.
You're gonna do the leg side.
For the street side first.
Okay.
Right, along, along the street first.
Okay. So, we have a schedule on the twenty-third, is that soon enough for you?
No, I want it right now.
Then you're gonna have to wait, and the mid-process, and I don't.
No, as long as I just say.
Okay, and then.
What?
To the city or to the parks board?
To the city.
Okay. Um, July twenty-third.
July twenty-third, perfect, that's tomorrow.
No, oh, shoot, it is, I, I need to go back to sleep.
Yeah, it's like that, I'm like, this is, so it's gonna be August sixth, dummy.
Oh, August sixth, okay.
Oh, my gosh, this isn't good.
I can say, Randy, if you wanna wait, there's a bench out.
Yeah, no, they're approved this morning, it's accounts payable, and that was not on it.
Okay, okay, okay.
So, yeah.
So the sixth, then? Okay, I'll let them know it's coming the sixth.
Yeah, it'd be like the afternoon, before we, you know, and I don't know if she'll walk it over, she'll mail it or not.
Yeah.
Make it printed and stuff.
So, I, I, I couldn't believe the people that stood up and talked about their, their disc golf courses, I mean, and then it's, some of them like ours, they didn't have a whole lot of room, so they said, well, would you people be satisfied with running uphill, downhill, sideways, whatever?
The tougher, some of them, the tougher it is, the more they're bad, they said, the kids, some of these high school kids, college kids even, the athletic ability of catching this thing and doing things.
Oh, I can see this will be Olympic, next year.
Well, we had a fundraiser that day, we, you know, we need more than, so we did a fundraiser, and I had a longest drive contest, so that, you know, they flung it out there, and so it was down on my bottom patio there, and it threw it over. Four hundred and fifty-six feet was the winning toss, that's one and one-half football fields. Do you take it as?
Baseball guys don't hit it much further than that.
No.
Wow.
I mean, they tell them you get one over four hundred and fifty.
Right, well, four twenty-five, you got a bonus, this year, yeah, but they, so if you would sit on the one, on the goal line, do you think you could throw it to the other goal line at a football field? And these guys throw it one and a half.
Wow.
Yeah, phenomenal, it was really something. And then, you know, and that's gonna be down the road, but the back nine that we're talking about doing is actually making openings through the wooded area, and that's what they want, is they just want this fairway to be narrow, I like Glenwood, cause it's wide open golf course.
Are there certain alleys that operate?
No, dark, dark, dark.
I just wondered, cause I reckon when they run two sets of them times, it works better.
Well, and that's, we're getting some signs up there, you know, beware, and ninety-eight percent of the disc golfers are very aware of that it's a cross-country course, and there's hikers, and they're very respectful back and forth, you know, that's, that's the biggest thing, and, you know, you put up a sign at the beginning, say, discs are coming, and then you put sign, this is also a runner's course. So, and then, and Todd was pretty fired up, because he knows now it's gonna get really well taken care of.
Cause he's been doing it.
He said it's gonna be done, but he's up there moaning all the time, too, it's, it's still his baby.
I believe it.
That, yeah, that course is still Todd's baby, he loves it, so, yeah, but he had no problem, he helped, they said, okay, work, can we set the pads and all this stuff?
He would know.
Yeah.
Perfect, yeah.
So, very good, good job, guys, have fun. Thank you.
Where'd you get your hat?
Where? I went to the, I heard to the NASCAR down at Kansas City, have you ever heard of Vetix? And I ended up getting, I got two tickets to the NASCAR race at Kansas City, and I think they cost me sixteen dollars. And as I'm walking up there, there was a guy selling me if he was legit or not, but it was twenty bucks for the hat, and he said it was going to a cause, and I went, here's your twenty bucks, dude, I like the hat, so. Yeah, so I bought it off of a guy.
At a place.
Used to have some similar.
Really?
I like them, I like, I like the flag ones.
Yeah, and it's, it's there, but it's subdued, you know, it doesn't. Yeah, digital's pretty cool, too. That's, yeah, I was getting, no, just as I was getting in, as far as the uniform goes, so. Very good, thank you, guys, thank you, Randy, appreciate it. Oh, I, I.
Anything, guys?
Oh, this was, oh, I see, you guys are making it off.
They're all fancy now.
Yeah.
The touchscreen is huge, you can just touch where you're at, and find out who was what.
Yeah, so this, that's all over, the acres, though, that they're talking about is over here.
Uh, back where we were, just wearing up the. See where Haitian is?
Yeah.
Okay, you're, back, oops, how you gonna find, uh,
Was it down there with the purple? To your left.
Back there where that, see where the square is?
Yeah.
That should be it. That's, that's like bowls. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I touched it. You do agree. Wow.
What country is it gonna get you on?
Pretty good. Oh, I, I go to Beacon all the time, so, Mid-America, is it actually Mid-America that owns it then, or? It is, okay.
God, you got a very, very nice price.
Wow.
Those people over there really just believe that it could turn into a solar panel. And, and I looked at Tom Henneman two years ago, I just thought, Mid-America bought water, what do you think's gonna happen to it?
Throw a nuclear plant, that's what's gonna happen.
And they're really not gonna destroy the ground or anything.
Right.
They're gonna build it however the land lays, even if it's a curvature land like this, that's how they're gonna build the solar, it doesn't have to be flat.
Really something when you sit back and think, though, I just saw that picture in, uh, South Korea. Solar panels, in the media, like, going down thirty-four, that would all be solar panels in between there. Wow, what a great idea, you know, what a just plan there.
Look at all your city buildings, even your state buildings, and have, why can't they?
The brewery, I tried to talk man, I mean, that, come on, it's just South facing that, oh, very.
And most of our farm buildings, especially your hog sheds and cattle sheds up north, that's all they are, is solar panels, I mean, that's what they, this one guy says, I haven't paid electric bill for twenty years.
Yeah, I went to Hawaii, went to a distillery there, and their area, like our patio down in the bottom there, it's there, and it's, there's a solar panel fourteen feet above the concrete, it's shade, you know, you put picnic tables underneath the solar panel, you're shaded, and there is.
Everybody's afraid of what they're gonna get off of it, you sit underneath a solar panel, you're gonna, you're gonna accumulate rays that's gonna eat your body.
We have solar on Adrian, I don't know, so we had, and you guys are probably getting the.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
Bags over here.
It's been four or five years now, I see on the C and D board of the city, we had people put them on their houses back then.
And you, I was saying, put this to your ear.
What do you think happened?
That's probably worse.
But, but, you know, I've, I've been doing, I've been doing this for a while, and, and, I've, you know, I've been, I think I'm okay, I think I'm.
Damn.
I don't know. I'm not, I admit to it.
Yeah, that's why you talk with speakerphone out here. Very good. Well, thanks again. Have fun, y'all.
I'd like to talk for you guys, so I'm with Project Recovery Iowa, so, you guys might remember it from when the flood happened. Uh, now there was tornadoes and there's potential flooding, and it's a FEMA grant, so, uh, this explains it better than, I'm not gonna read it to you, you guys know how to read. Um, so if you know anybody, I don't know a lot of affected areas, I contacted the emergency management.
I can just, just ask for.
And, and we didn't have, there might have been a little bit of farmland and stuff, and Mills County, but not a lot of houses.
Cause they're down in the southwest corner of Mills County, where the Missouri River.
Was flooding.
Was, was, they couldn't get the gate shut quickly.
Yeah, a little bit of flooding.
Boiling back in, but, so.
And the tornadoes that went through, like Shelby County, cause I have Shelby County, too, I go over to Shelby County. Yeah, so, but if you know anybody in Mills County, give us information, there's gonna be pot over here on the, on the west side of the edge, and that's there.
Got it.
Okay, yeah, something always pops up, and sometimes with the flooding that was coming down, with our past flooding experience, there might be something that pops up, and they're still welcome to contact.
Okay.
Even if it was back in two thousand and fifteen.
I love the, okay, shoot, that'll explain it.
But if you know anybody, and like I said, we cover, the, the, the grant covers all of basically Southwest Iowa, and we go, I personally go as far as Shelby County. Um, but I cover Mills County directly, too, so if you know anybody, feel free to give us information. And it, and I gave it to public health, and so much.
And where is your office or where?
Um, we, we go out to people.
Oh, then you go to them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're traveling a bit and stuff, uh, but we have, I, what I will do, too, is I just got my phone from Des Moines, so I have a different phone number that I don't have in my house. And I'll, I'll get it to you guys, so if there's anybody you know directly or would reach me directly, you can still reach me on my personal phone, cause, uh, but I do have a phone number.
Okay, all right, I'll get that to you. That's all.
What you doing?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Well, this was an exciting meeting, wasn't it?
Is it time to ask some questions?
Sure can.
Little material, you have a turn.
Should we adjourn?
Do you have anything to add?
We just, no, nothing to add, no. Will I make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I will second that at ten oh five.
Ten oh five.
Second adjourn meeting at ten oh five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, I'm. Can I get some general thoughts about?